I'd like to call the zoning commission regular meeting to order on November 2nd, 2023 at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask the public joining us in person to approach the podium in the event that they would like to speak. They will need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversation for after the meeting as additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. Roll please.
Fisher.
Here.
Drew.
Here.
Marzullo.
Here.
Manley.
Here.
Engelmann.
Here.
In the audience is alternate Spellman, trustee Auguste, trustee Sweattick is virtue.
And so is Andrea Chino.
Thank you. And zoning inspector Wilson is awesome.
Perfect, thank you. Our first order of business is the review of the zoning commission regular meeting minutes from October 5th, 2023. Have you ever had the opportunity to review them? Are there any comments or questions?
None here. I'd make a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Second by Engelmann. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved as written. There is no old business, so the next item of business is the final topic that we had discussed in potentially incorporating into the proposed amendments to the zoning resolution that we've been working on. And that is the review of the senior citizen residential facilities within the zoning resolution. So if we turn to page 90 of our book. I'll briefly show the screen. Can you enable screen sharing for me or I may think you host, please? We'll just review, zoom in on the relevant. So as you might recall, generally multi-unit dwellings are not permitted within our code. However, for senior citizen residential facilities, we do note in item one that senior citizens residential facilities may include one or more of the following independent dwelling units which are either attached or which are either detached or attached cluster dwelling units, multifamily dwellings, or a combination thereof, or congregate living facilities which include units for independent living, assisted living, or nursing care. And then it defines what congregate living is. There's been some discussion as to whether this should remain in the code or if we want to amend this in some way. So I am open to thoughts on this topic.
Just a quick interruption, trustee Ashford has joined his line.
Thank you. Can you tell me or tell us what the discussion or the request was? To remove it, to amend it, to?
I think, I mean, I think Ms. Engelmann, you brought this up in January, so this was added as a topic of discussion based upon that. I don't know if the intent was just to review it, to consider amendments, what those amendments would be. But that was why this was added to the list. I think it was in January when we were looking at what items we wanted to review this year. There was obviously in the past some discussion about whether that should be there or not. Remember when the senior housing first went in, there was some debate as to whether our general sections, chapter four states that that all housing has to be single-family residential homes. And so this was in conflict with that. But if you remember when there is a specific code section about a particular topic, that will control over a generalized statement in another section of our code. And so they were able to proceed with the construction of the detat or multi, I guess it would be called multiple family dwellings as a result of that, or you could call it an attached cluster dwelling.
I wish I would, I, um, question on the Fair Housing Act, which is federal. So that trumps anything we have. So if the Fair Housing Act allows it.
Yeah, I don't think that the fair housing necessarily allows certain types of dwellings. What the fair housing is predominantly focused on is you can't discriminate against seniors.
Okay.
But again, this goes back to if the code is content neutral, you should be able to regulate the types of dwellings that you want.
Okay.
But again, all of this will be reviewed by legal counsel as part of any proposed amendment process. So we could amend it and then legal counsel would review it and tell us whether that's acceptable or not acceptable.
Wouldn't the reverse be better?
What?
We might just make a comment, ask questions. Would this be okay? Would this be okay rather than drag this out?
Certainly do that. This, we, I don't intend for us to approve the code tonight. So if there's someone that wants us to, I don't, I don't intend for us to make a motion to advance this to the next stage tonight. So if there are any topics or any items that you do want to seek legal counsel on because you want to have some language changed, but you're not sure whether you're permitted to, certainly that's something that.
Well, would it make sense to solicit some kind of information or review by the, from the trustees and perhaps even the zoning inspector? Trustees here from the public, much more than we do per se because of outer form. And Tom may run into some issues up there that one that might be of concern.
Inspector Wilson.
It's not a statement, that's, I could be.
So if I understand what you had up there before is is this relate to like having multi families allowed, what's the word I'm saying of?
Multi-family dwellings, it's more clustered homes.
Yeah, this, this is not the seniors having your parents move in and acquire the house.
No, this would be right. This is within the B1 district. We permit as a conditional use senior residential facilities. And this is where we define what senior residential facilities are, are. And, and within that, we allow for attached cluster dwellings and multifamily dwellings. And so do we want to retain that within the section? Or do we want to remove that such that any senior citizen residential facilities could effectively only be detached cluster dwellings? I think would be the question.
Well, that's only in B.
Only in B1.
B1, I'm sure, yeah.
Correct. So I mean, I'll share what I, my, my two cents on this and I could be very off on my thinking here, but when I looked at this, so here's the B1 district. Remember that there is still also Buzzard's Cove that's B1. But that we might look at is through other amendments to the text. So let's just focus on this section of B1. This section of B1, most of this is the senior housing as it is already. The only vacant property is this section up here, which is currently being proposed for the discount drug mart. We'll see if that goes through or not. And then there is this vacant 10 acre parcel back here, which is owned by the, I think the family that owns Great Lakes Construction.
Yeah.
And so that's the other only empty B1 section. Currently as it is, if you remember when we're, because we just went through this whole annexation process. In order for annexation to move forward, it has to be a contiguous property to Brunswick. So let's assume that discount drug mart does go to, to Brunswick. What stops the progression down Center Road? Is the senior housing because the senior housing prevents any contiguous motion down Center Road. That's very beneficial for us because the senior housing is approximately, I think, how many homes are there?
120, I believe.
120 homes?
119.
So that's 120 homes or 200 or so people that have an interest in avoiding property taxes that they would have or income taxes if they would go to Brunswick. So as it is right now, that's very valuable. So the senior housing does not have much desire to move to for annexation. But for the fact that if they decide that they want to try to expand into this section, or they've acquired one of these parcels here already. If they decide that they want to somehow move this way and our zoning code doesn't allow for them to continue with their current roadmap. That to me is the only incentive that they would have to ever seek annexation, which could then allow for further annexation down 303. So that's where I would think that it's very important that we allow the senior housing to continue with their current business model. And that I don't see any major reason, given how small this section is, to rezone this so that they can't continue with that business model.
But the only, correct me if I'm wrong, the only person that, or the, the only say that matters in annexation is the property owner.
Correct.
Which is a business.
Correct.
So they, they could very easily say, hey, you know, we want the tax benefits. We don't really care about our tenants having to pay.
And that could be, but you as a business person, I think, would care very much about if your tenants are all threatening to leave because they're going to pay an income tax, especially if they are seniors that are limited income and they're now having to pay income tax on the, on their social security and other retirement benefits. That's an incentive for them. As I said, right now, I don't think that that senior housing has any incentive to seek annexation. But the only way that annexation continues down this way is if senior housing goes, gets annexed to Brunswick and/or if some property over here in the I1, I2 district gets annexed and therefore there's a jump across the road. So, but to me, the senior housing is a great firewall to prevent any annexation down 303 pathway. It doesn't prevent it across the West 130th because there's still the contiguous across this direction. But it does prevent it down 303 as long as these are protected and as long as you have the senior housing serving as that L-shaped firewall right there. So I, again, given how limited the potential growth is of this, I wouldn't want to do anything to this definition that would cause that developer to look and say, you guys have just prevented me from continuing my business model, prevented me from any future growth and therefore I want to lay out. Because right now, as our code is, he, they could continue if they wanted to expand into the other B1 section or potentially seek a rezoning of some of those empty parcels and add on there. But if we take away that business model from them, that would be a strong incentive for them to try to jump to the other side. And they can do that even if discount drug mart annexation loses because they have a straight connector from Brunswick to Hinkley across West 130th. So regardless of what happens with discount drug mart, their property connects to Brunswick. You speak loud enough, but at least we need your name and.
Jim Larson, 20 Car Road. I couldn't disagree with you more. Number one, you're making the assumption that should that property get annexed into Brunswick.
Which property?
The existing senior, senior housing project get annexed into Brunswick, that the senior housing use travels with it. My nightmare scenario is if the rents there, which are anywhere from 2,000 to 4,000 a month, if they can't fill that place up. Excuse me, fill that place up as senior housing. What do you think they're going to do? They're going to look at that property right next door to it, which is annexed. They're going to go right over to Brunswick and say, we would like to be annexed because we can't fill our property up. Will you relieve us of the senior housing use that we have now, which is the reason that we can't fill this place up? I'm so sorry. Which is the reason we can't fully populate this, this, and a, and a place like that. My experience, real estate in California, a builder will go and build, he'll fill his residence up and you know, these apartment sizes here are real similar what California is. They'll rent it out. They get an income stream for two to three years and then they'll flip it and go on to the next.
But Mr. Larson, I guess what within our zoning, the only way to solve that would be to tell them they don't have to meet the senior housing, they can have the cluster homes without senior housing. Cause that's what you're suggesting.
I'm saying is that, is that use an obligation to Brunswick should it be annexed? I would doubt that very much. Other words, is Brunswick required to honor the fact that that is a senior housing residence? And if it went over to Brunswick, would it, would it be, would it remain so if the owners decided that that's, you know, what they wanted to do? Cause I'd bet a lot of money that if they can't rent those places the way they want to, they're going to come right back to you and ask you for relief from that place being a senior housing saying, well, we've got millions of dollars invested here. We can't rent it. The reason we can't res, rent it is because we signed up for a use that is impractical and we can't rent all our apartments.
Well, I guess, sorry, my position is that right now we have senior housing defined here that allows for cluster homes, which is something that they are currently taking advantage of. And if we amend that language to remove the ability for them to build cluster homes, we potentially put them in a worst case scenario, in a, in a worse position to encourage annexation. Now I'm asking you, I don't know, the, the flip side to that would be, no, there's some reason why we want to remove the attached or clustered dwelling. And what you just told me doesn't really have anything to do with that question, which is, do we want to remove from senior residential facilities, multifamily dwellings as a use? Because that's what we're really discussing here is, do we keep that language that allows for multifamily dwellings in senior housing? Or do we remove that so that senior housing is still permitted, but now they can only build detached homes as opposed to attached?
Oh, well, I mean, I, I don't much care about that component of it. My concern is that you've, you've allowed you, the township has allowed 120 unit apartment complex to be built, which I can't remotely imagine was what the intent of the comprehensive plan was when that use was suggested. It was suggested in the comprehensive plan, as I recall, you know, auto-occupied bucolic residents that would always be available for the Hinkley senior to move in who could no longer manage their property. And this is far, far, far from, from that. So I guess the question I really have sitting there is, is whether or not you can go take a step back, look at the intent of the comprehensive plan and then come up with changes. Should you think changes are made, need to be made based on what the intent of the comprehensive plan was? Because I don't know a single person that drives by that place that thinks this is a good thing for Hinkley. So, and that's a much bigger question that I don't know if it's, it's something that you need to address or the trustees need to address. But I mean, it is there, it's not going anywhere. I'm just curious to see what the use will be as time marches on. If they can fill that up with 20% renters from anywhere and 80% seniors, more power to them, but.
Mr. Larson, I guess we certainly within our zoning potentially, I think we have to, we have to follow the comprehensive plan. But let's say like the comprehensive plan said, we didn't want any senior house residential facilities. Well, that still exists there, right? And so we can't do anything about that. What we could do is remove that language from our zoning resolution moving forward, but you still have the challenge of then you've road blocked them from any future expansion and giving them another reason to seek annexation if their business models suggest that they need to grow in that, in that location. So what I'm trying to do is figure out whether it makes sense to amend any of our zoning resolution right now to that, to do anything that would potentially cause detriment to that specific area as it relates to the senior housing facility. Or do we keep the code as it is, recognizing that the B1 is pretty small, that, that's been undeveloped and continue to try to maintain that within Hinkley? And how are we doing that? And that's the balancing act. And so that's what I'm trying to figure out tonight is what are we doing with this language with respect to senior?
Yeah, and Martha, our physical officer, she, I think a year or two ago, explained to me what was going on cluster housing versus non-cluster housing and the the conundrum that they had when they were putting this all together way back before I got interested in it. My big fear is that that place was originally zoned R1, if I recall. Well, was you, it's intent from the conference, as I saw, was light industrial retail. And it transmogrified into what it is, you know, a use now that you change the zoning, which opened the door for senior housing use.
So that, that's, I was on the commission when we, when we handled that and ultimately what happened was it was mostly B1. There were three or four plots that were, it's not, it's inconsequential. There are three or four plots just east of Buzzard's Roos. And those three or four that were owned by the, the, the previous owner of the, what's now the senior housing and one that was owned by someone who owns property in the I2. And they all said, yeah, we want, we want this rezoned B1. And I believe it's the, for the life of me, I can't remember his name. He was worried about all the flooding.
Terry, was that Terry? Well, the guy next door.
He was.
Oh, Mr. Bindoff.
Mr. Bindoff.
He's the most famous man in all of Hinkley.
Mr. Bindoff was the one who said, nope, I definitely don't want to be. And that's where it stopped. So the, the expansion of B1 went up to where Mr. Bindoff's property is. And those additional three or four plots are ultimately what led to the senior housing because it gave them a little more space to then have access via 303 as well.
So the two access points is supposed to.
What my intent was.
So it was, it was originally the vast majority, but was always B1.
It wasn't my intent to take up this much time.
No.
It would be my deepest wish that you could make senior housing as unattractive an option for developer as you possibly could because it's so generally hated. At least this one is. I don't know if it's, that's, that's the intent of the comp plan to have anything like that, but generally speaking, it is a, it's a real sore point up there with conservation developments and stuff like this. But I think the conservation development's been settled. That matter is settled as far as I'm concerned. But the future of, of senior housing, you know, there's a lot of vacant land here and.
There's not a lot of vacant B1.
There's not a lot of vacant B1 land, but you know, time marches on, you know, people that have the ability to hire expensive lawyers, come in here and press their cause and things can change and they can change easily. So anyway, I was just concerned mainly about the use of the senior housing. Would it transfer, could it transfer over to Brunswick? And my, my feeling is that they could just absolutely ignore it the way that you, if they so chose to.
But what I would say is even if that's a real possibility, we can't do anything about that right now. So what I'm looking for is what do we do with the code as it's written now? And do we make any changes to the codes as written now?
Okay.
How now, how big, how big is that plot that is undeveloped and?
10 acres.
10 acres. And the original plot is, I will say 20?
And the, it was 20 something, as I recall.
For, for the senior housing, is that correct?
I had no idea 20 acres is so big until I drove by and saw the thousands of trees they cut down.
That's probably another 10. And then you have this and this. So it's probably about 20, 25.
Yeah, I was writing that. So I, I think one of the things that we, we did kind of gloss over is that there is still B1 down on 606.
And I referenced that and I said, I think we're looking to change that. So I'm only going to focus on here because I think that the intent is to move that either to one of the other B districts or add a fourth B district. So since we're looking at this holistically, let's focus on this and assume that whatever language we, we look at right now is only applicable to this section. That said, Mr. Larson, I will give you, I fully expect that B1 will expand across the few more of those lots going down 303. Well, Mr. Bindoffer doesn't want it. Again, next to that is a couple vacant parcels, including one that's owned by senior housing. So I am sure that at some point they'll seek to move over. And then you have another property there that potentially could move. So you'd see that.
There's, there's a big difference between owning and rezoning.
Right.
Because the one that's on the other side of Mr. Bindoffer right now, I can't imagine would be rezoned as B1 simply because it's owned by them. And now you have just an island of B1 surrounded by R1.
Right. I think that I would agree. They would have to eventually acquire some of those other properties and you could see it moving down a little bit over the next 10 or 15 years. I agree with you. You won't see an isolation of a single B1 or two B1s.
Well, I, I guess what I'm saying is like, even if they got 10 lots, I don't see it being rezoned as long as Mr. Bindoffers is not, as long as he sits, stays there and says, no, I don't want this result. I never want this result.
Could, can I, it's mine, you got a understanding, Mr. Bindoff has restriction on his property. It's never to be used for any form of business. Whole page full of restrictions there. Now how that would stand up after he's.
It does, that doesn't mean it couldn't be rezoned business. It just means that they couldn't use that for business because.
Just that piece? Okay.
So he, they could still rezonate business.
I, I never read it, but I understand it's a sheet, almost two sheets of paper.
A property owner never has the right to restrict against zoning because the zoning.
He doesn't want that barrier down. He doesn't want the trees down. I mean, it's whole list of things. I made my point. Didn't mean to take you down a bunny trail.
I was just trying to, Mr. Larson, that there is a possibility that he could see some expansion there. The other possibility would be that the owners of, of Great Lakes come in and seek to have that existing B1 that's vacant rezoned I2 because it connects to their I2. Perhaps they want to expand their industrial area and add to that use. In order to do that, they probably have to be in the industrial district because whatever they're doing is probably not allowed in the B1 district. So it's possible that we'd see an expansion of the I2 into that vacant land. There's several scenarios there.
I hope to see Mr. Bindoff.
Thank you.
Never disturb again. He went through hell.
So a couple of things on this. Thank you for mentioning that senior housing has created a barrier for further annexation. Oftentimes with annexation, that request is by the property owner, as you mentioned, prior to building. So the threat of having senior housing move over. So the threat of having senior housing move over at this juncture is very rare. Senior housing wasn't just in the comprehensive plan. It's been in our zoning since two thousand and two. Same exact definition for years and years and years. In two thousand and seventeen, we did do an amendment to that definition. To include the fair housing that the federal government had provided. That's the only thing that changed. I had mentioned at campaign night that this is something that I wanted to see just expanded in definition. It's very broad right now. And there are a lot of people who are complaining about it as citizens in the township. So that's just my two cents. If there's any type of further additional changes you want to make to it. Just to kind of better define it, but I don't think we can just get rid of it, obviously.
Better define what? Because senior housing age is already.
Right, that's defined by fair housing.
So we can't limit the age.
I think the clusters are the big component for a lot of citizens that that's what I have heard. It's mentioned as apartments.
I will mention, if we look at the comprehensive plan, I can't pull this up on my, on my screen. There was a survey done and it's an appendix on page eighty one. And you would actually see that they have an entire example of, let me see if I can pull up. Cause I think it was kind of interesting. And I do think that we might run into trouble when we bring this to the Medina Planning Commission as a result of this.
Like mine is right after zone, right?
It's here.
Oh, maybe you were supposed to put it in.
So the only type of senior living according to the survey that we saw in the appendix. There were, it was broken down into three types, independent living, assisted living and skilled care. And you can see that both skilled care and assisted living felt the majority felt that those were not appropriate types for the community. But independent living, a vast majority of those that, that came back with results forty five to fifteen indicated that independent living should be there. And in fact, there were some pictures and this is kind of what I thought was interesting. And I'm sorry, it becomes grainy because I'm enlarging so much. But when you look at these. Some of those pictures are very clearly attached cluster homes. And so that's what our comprehensive plan shows with respect to senior housing activity voting results. Were those, were those pictures included in the, I don't know. But this is what we have in the comprehensive plan, which was what was approved, is this with these pictures.
Where are those pictures?
Page eighty one.
And I, the, the reason I ask is because they're all the same thing. They're all cluster homes. Had they been individual smaller bungalows side by side.
Well, would, would this one is detached. There, that one's detached. This one's attached. This one's attached two story and this is attached. Again, these pictures are pretty poor because I zoomed in so far, but they show both detached and attached dwelling units.
So I, I genuinely can't even tell that that top left is detached.
Yeah, they're small. But they're a bunch of small Cape Town homes.
And the reason I bring that up is because when we're looking at it. When, when we said, hey, do you think that, you know, independent living is, is good for the community? You know, you've got seventy five percent of the respondents said yes.
But then did we narrow it down and say?
Did we say, should they be detached? Should they be attached? And we didn't, we didn't do that part. And it's almost like.
But we did say.
It's like what you do with your kids when you ask them, hey, what do you want for dinner? Russell's prouts or broccoli?
I, I get it. And I want a lollipop. Well, that's not enough. I don't know what the actual survey looked like to say that. All that I know is that this is what's in our comprehensive plan. And so that's why I said, if we run through this with Medina planning, we could have a problem because when you look at this. And we also have as a definition to make matters worse, housing for seniors who are independent with few medical needs. Residents live in fully equipped private apartments ranging from studio apartments to two bedroom units. So it's, it's not just the pictures, it's how we've defined it here. And so really to, again, I think that the comprehensive plan probably should be revised. Before we even look at revising this definition of senior housing. But I tend to believe that we should keep the definition as is and not potentially oppose any more burdens on, on development, should this developer seek to expand.
So just as a point of observation, we also allow residential facilities in B two districts, conditional permitted. And that would be like West one hundred thirtieth in Boston area. And there is quite a bit of vacant land there. I don't know how much.
Well, maybe I would like to see if the reason people are for, you know, the, the senior housing or, or against the skilled care or assisted is because of the type of accommodations. Cause you know skilled and assisted are usually in a one.
They're also far more taxing on emergency response.
Okay, but to see whether or not it is the separate, that, you know, detached homes or not. I would like to, I would like to pursue that and find out if that's the issue.
Or why?
Like more of an issue for a comprehensive plan. I mean, that, that's when you would find out that sort of thing is to, to do a survey and get results and update the plan. It's, isn't that how you would do that?
Probably, I guess, to find out, you know, this forty five is a strong number. So why was it forty five for that? I, I guess I would, those are the questions that I would ask.
I think it's because when you look generally, and again, everyone might have had a different impression, I would say generally. You know, Hinckley has a pretty, has a robust aging population that they were looking to downsize homes. And they want to stay in Hinckley. And so some sort of independent assisted living in their minds was what they want. Now, maybe what became a reality and what they thought they would get is very different things. I think that that's very fair to survey. But I suspect that the reason you're seeing those numbers is because there's a fair number of people that needed to move into someplace smaller and more accommodating.
I was also, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt here, but how many respondents Melissa, do we have on the comprehensive survey?
Yeah, audit results.
Yeah.
I think we were at like forty five percent.
Forty five percent of all Hinckley. So how many hundreds of responses?
I don't have it in front of me. I would have to look it up.
All right. And the, the reason I'm asking that obviously is when we have forty five percent of the community responding compared to sixty.
Right.
I mean, we're going to get a much more accurate read on things if we, if we can get more, more involvement. But then, that said, these results are also based off of when the community was looked quite a bit differently demographically.
Right, right. And, and there were not, the results were not as great as they were this time.
Yeah.
So, but the only thing I was going to add though, Matt, was that when I look at the senior housing questions, what comes into my mind and what I'm most familiar with is the senior housing in Royalton. And I forget what it, what was that? Is it Bennett or Bennett maybe? Where they actually have the detached, small town homes in the skated community. So I.
I think Royalton also has the diplomat on West one thirty.
Yeah.
And that, that is a skilled care.
Right, but that wasn't, that, that's a newer one that's come about in the last five, ten years.
And I actually want to bring that up because that, I think that explains why there's so much resistance to that in the community. Because that is much more of a business than it is a, you know, just to quote Jim at Bucolic Community. You have ambulances going in and out on a regular basis. You have large vehicles. Like my, my shred trucks going, they're loud when they're running. If you came out to the shred day, you heard. You have medical waste companies coming in. You have, you have a lot of large vehicles coming in. It's, it's, there's a lot of commercial activity going in and out of those kinds of facilities that you're not getting with what we, what we see right now.
So Matt, to answer your question about the audit, there was a thirty seven percent response rate, which meant twelve hundred forty surveys were received out of three hundred, three thousand, three hundred nineteen. And then the questions related to senior housing, would you support additional senior housing to be developed in B one and B two? Yes, twenty two point eight percent, no, seventy seven point two. Would you support skilled care assisted living facility to be developed in B one and B two? Yes, twenty two percent, no, seventy eight percent. Would you favor senior housing if specific design standards were created to guide the development? Yes, thirty one and a half percent, no, sixty eight and a half percent. And then there was a overall question of please select the types of development you feel would be appropriated in Hinckley. Like single family, conservation developments, senior housing and multi-family. And the senior housing development received, twenty percent of the people said senior housing would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Cindy. I actually am just sending those results over to Marcus so he could share them on his screen. And just to note, this is one of the biggest responses Hinckley Township has ever received. As far as the survey goes.
So then the majority, it looks like a seventy percent, do not want senior housing, period. That's what I hear.
Yeah. And, but I think genuinely part of that was the timing. Had that, had that been sent out before these apartments went in, I think you would have seen some pretty dramatically different results. Especially even, even that, that last piece that Cindy read off about if there were specific design standards. If, if there had been specific design standards that had to be followed. And there was some way to illustrate, all right, this is kind of what, what senior housing should look like if it's going to be in Hinckley. I think you'd probably have a lot of people before this, this all happened. A lot of people would have looked at it if, if it was well designed and say, oh yeah, single detached, it's on half an acre. It's, you know, a twenty two hundred square foot ranch. I think you would have had a whole lot of people say, yeah, you know, that, that could fit in this community. But there's, there, I think genuinely what we're seeing is, is a lot of pushback based on what we ended up with. Which is not what I don't think anybody really wanted, aside from the developer.
So i- if that said, how do you define it? How would you want to define it, Matt? You mean?
I mean.
It's, if, if the majority of those polled do not want it. And we're looking at modifying it, how does that affect what we have today? Or should we worry about it?
I keep looking at F three, where it says, facilities shall be developed on the site in compliance with the development regulations of the zoning district and what's the facility is proposed. And we don't have an acreage requirement for residential uses in the, in the B or I districts.
You, you, you wouldn't because normally it's a single parcel. So it's not being parcel off. Normally when you see it in a business district, it's a single parcel.
Yep. And what we ended up with was a hundred and nineteen dwelling units on twenty some acres. So would it just make more sense rather than changing this? To potentially, I know we've already brought up the fact that we, we will likely tackle architectural design standards. Do we, instead of changing the definition, say, you know, if you are going to use B one or B two or any of the business districts for any sort of residential business? It can have no, no more than one family unit per quarter acre. Is that a way to stem it without stifling it?
But then it would certainly, again, if your mind is on this type of development, that would change it. But again, one of the other things to consider is as we have it, we allow for those larger facilities as well, where you would have multiple seniors within a single building. And that would effectively cut that off. Now, maybe that's a good thing, maybe it's a bad thing, but I'm just noting that that sort of definition, you can only have one single family.
I think based off of what we just heard, cutting that off is exactly what the community would want.
Then we should amend this to get rid of some of the stuff that, because as it says right now. The facilities which include units for independent living, assisted living or nursing care. Just another big asterisk to this is when we went through. I forget what amendment it was or what was, was under consideration. Medina planning noted that they're not considering our audit because it's not part of our plan. So the audit results will still cause, you know, when the, when it goes through planning, now planning is just a recommendation. But when it goes through planning, they'll note that they, they're going to look at our plan.
The original one.
The plan, the actual plan.
Which still kind of supports what I'm saying.
It does. It certainly supports, it certainly supports the, the, the removal of nursing care and skilled care.
No.
I don't know that I would say that it supports the idea that you have one property per certain amount of land. You look at what those pictures are, that's in the plan. And when you look at them defining it as studio apartments. That does not fit what you had just suggested.
Number, number of families per acre? I think you, it, it still does. Even, even with the photos, they're, they're showing it's not a high rise. It's not level after level after level.
We don't allow that anyway.
Yeah, but you could definitely get three stories there. And you could put over twenty acres with three stories, you could very easily get a couple hundred families in there. Whereas if we're saying, hey, you can only have one dwelling unit per quarter acre property in the parcel. That it's, it's not defining, it has to be, you know, separated. You could still go with, with, what, what are they? Cluster homes? You could still go with cluster homes, but you basically have a yield plan saying, hey, you know what we're looking at is. You could still go with cluster homes, but you basically have a yield plan saying, hey, you know what we're looking at is. We're we're gonna use this twenty acres and that will yield. What, call that eighty? I I think that would be would be a much more tolerable.
I'm not opposed to.
I kind of like it, and I kind of like pushing it back from the street and that, yeah.
Similar like what we want to do with with the conservation developments of, look, you know what, live your life. But don't destroy the rural community.
That would also give them.
I still do have my concern though about, you know, I would tend to say, let's get rid of senior housing from B two. Let's keep it in B one, let's not change that, because again, I worry about doing anything along that order. That causes the. The increases of probability of annexation down through a three. That's what I'm most concerned about, because I don't want to see any annexation move down through a three. And so I do worry about creating any sort of restrictions relative to what they're currently doing. That encourages annexation. So as opposed to doing anything that might that might limit what they can do up there, I would rather take it and say. Go ahead and do with B one just as you're doing, but let's take out a B two so they can't expand it B two. Because there aren't any B two, so we won't have to worry about that harm over there and. And try to, again, reduce that probability. I understand what you're saying, and I like the idea of lowering the density. But again, I don't want to do something that jeopardizes that.
I I think right now, your your concern is certainly founded. But it becomes potentially less concerning. Depending on how things proceed with the current situation with with the the drug mark property.
So if anything, we should punt this until that's done.
I I think that would make the most sense. And I I also, I mean, like you said, we it's not something that we're gonna be moving on with the current. The the current amendments that we we still need to get to and hopefully move on this evening. So it's it's something that now we've brought it up, we've had a little discussion and. You know, we can meet back in December, maybe people have had a little bit more time to mull it over and. Come back fat and happy from Thanksgiving and have a good conversation.
Well, let me ask you then, do you want me to include it next month? I don't think if if we're waiting on the results of the annexation, if annexation, if we get some results, certainly I can include it. But I suspect that we're not gonna have anything. I don't think we'll have it until at least the next, you know, if we do another round of text amendments next year. Maybe we'll be able to find it by the end of the end of the next round before we move. But I I don't, at this point, I don't even see any reason to include it.
It would it would it would likely make most sense to put it back on our on our working schedule of, all right, these are topics that. Are hot. But the hottest ones need to move to the top and. Based on what's gonna happen with the the current fight. Now, yes, I get it that if. Either way that that goes, they're still contiguous to Brunswick, and if they want to go to go that route as well, they have that option. But depending on the outcome of what happens on that one, it might change their mind one way or the other.
Or may decrease the probability if we get favorable rulings.
Exactly, and yeah, we we have more opportunity to possibly move without fear of annexation again. So certainly, I think that that's a reasonable approach. Is everyone else in agreement with that? We will take that off of our list for this round of amendments. And we'll just keep it again on the list of topics moving forward into next year, and we'll evaluate that again. As potentially when results of the annexation move through.
Can I make one comment, if I could, please? I understand sixty percent of the people opposed to the senior housing. Whether it be cluster homes, apartments, doesn't matter, that was never given a choice. You can't eliminate. Senior housing as such under the fair housing thing, so aren't you kind of caught in a. In a position here, if you do this, you're kind of screwed, if you don't do this, you're screwed, I mean. You have sixty percent of the public, for whatever reason, opposed to senior housing. They they don't care, I mean, what what it looks like, it's just, we don't want it.
I I I think. One thing that is is important there is that they're exposed, they're opposed to expansion. It already.
Oh, I agree with it, that's what they're opposed to.
It already exists, so that the Fair Housing Act. We have senior housing.
Right.
Fair housing can't require you to have a certain amount of senior housing in your township, we already.
Well.
It's there, it solved the problem, if there were gonna be a problem of saying, well, you aren't allowing senior housing.
Well, see, that's the way I look at what's up there, is if we have an alternative, you may not like it, but there is an alternative. I have seen so many people who put a lot of time and volunteer in the township over the forty seven, forty seven years we've been out here. That were forced to leave when they got to be eighty five, eighty six, eighty seven, because they could not take care of their acre and a half, two acres, or whatever it would be. And to me, it was like, you did, we we liked all your free time, but now go. It was a terrible way to send them off, but it that's what happened, but now there is an alternative. And again, people may not like it, but it is an alternative.
It's expensive alternative for senior citizen.
Well.
What what in Hinkley is inexpensive? What in Hinkley is going to be an inexpensive alternative for senior?
And and that's why I don't see.
Whether it's own or.
Well, that that's why I don't see them moving across the road so they could do away with it, because if they want four thousand dollars a month rent for two bedroom, which I. I and I have not heard that personally from them, but I've heard from other sources, going across the road is not gonna change that. They they might be able to write rent to a thirty year old, if he can afford or she can afford four thousand dollars a month. So I I just don't think that's a big issue. Thank, I think the idea of kind of setting aside and thinking about what we want to do here instead of dragging out time would be a good idea.
That's what we'll do. The next item is the second review of some proposed amendments, I don't intend to get through all of A through F today. We can stop at any point if anyone wants to entertain a motion to adjourn. I thought we'd go through a few of the topics that seem to not have much of a had, didn't have much of a. You know, a a conflict with them, and then we can decide what to do if we want to move forward with the other ones, or we want to postpone it till the December meeting. As I said, my intent was not to move forward with a motion tonight to get this on the agenda. As it is, we've already missed the deadline for a November hearing with the Medina Planning Commission anyway, because of how our schedule fell relative to theirs. So nothing here is urgent, we'll go through them, we'll take our time and. Let's see what we get. The first one was automobile refueling and recharging station, I think we've gone through that one ad nauseam. So. Again, what we've done is we've broken down. The the automotive automobile service station into two separate definitions, automobile refueling or recharging station, automobile repair and service. Those definitions are the same ones that we advanced uh co- two years ago.
Right.
To the Medina Planning Commission. So we we made no changes to them, we're just readvancing it, and the reason that we're readvancing is because the trustees at that point didn't did not. Chose not to move forward with this, given that there was the potential comprehensive plan, they wanted to wait for that. So this was not necessarily something that the trustees at that time were against, it was just something that they wanted to wait. For some additional information before they move forward. Comprehensive Medina Planning Commission did have a, did have concerns about this definition, so we'll see what happens when it moves forward. Predominantly, they were concerned with with. A breakdown between minor and major repair, because we are not delineating the two. So again, we'll we'll ignore what's going on with the B four right now. The big note notation here just had to do with amendment in our uses to automobile refueling and recharging. Station, so again, we're allowing that as a conditional use within the the business district. But we are not allowing any sort of automotive repair within the business districts. We are, however, allowing automotive repair in the industrial districts, which is consistent with what. What was permitted before in the business districts, and so that was amended right here to say automotive repair and service is permitted within the. I two district. And we do have some automotive repair already in our I two district, so I think that that's a good thing to maintain, so that there's no nonperforming use there. I think that that covers all of the amendments that we made for automobile. Refueling and recharging station, are there any concerns with that portion of the amendments? Perfect, and we're still okay with moving forward with that in this proposed amendment.
Yeah, I am.
Good. The next topic that we discussed was. Floor area versus living area versus living space, all which had some port, we had that two definitions in our text. Not, but we did not define all three of these, so we really tried to make this more consistent, and so if we go back up into the definition section, if I can find it. We defined floor area gross. As the total area of a building calculated on a floor by floor basis enclosed by the building's outer walls. This was include basements, porches, garages, breezes, and terraces. We've also defined floor area public, which is the floor that is accessible to the public after the space occupied by the walls is deducted from the gross floor area. That's going to be important for businesses. We've also defined living area. As the area within a dwelling intended, designed, erected, or used for human occupancy. This does not include basements, porches, garages, breezes, or terraces, so that's the distinction between living area and floor area.
One quick. Do we want to say this does not include unfinished basements?
Can we continue and then come back to that? Because I I want to see, I forget how it works, plays out as we move down.
Yeah, I know, that's fine.
Then, but I think that's a good point, that whether it's unfinished or not. Okay, adult material store, we just got rid of gross public floor area, again, the way that we've defined them now, it's just the public floor area. Again, sex shop, we just had floor area, it was actually meant to be public floor area, so we cleared that up. In the R one district, we had floor requirements, and we talked about now living area requirements. And so in order to promote health, helpful living conditions and to stabilize the value and character. We're going to have a minimum living area, and for purposes of calculating living area, all areas within accessory buildings shall not be included. We delete it within garages, basements are included, because by definition now, living area does not include basements, garages. When we look down here at the total living area, we give certain square footage requirements. Mr. Mercer, to your point, this is where I would be concerned that if we define living area to include or to exclude only unfinished portions. We might have a problem here because of how the living areas work out, and that's what I gotta, I would have to read, so. A multi-level dwelling unit shall include nine hundred and sixty square feet of living and a minimum fourteen hundred. So by definition, if we included finished basement here. A home could be built that has nine hundred and sixty square feet on the first floor, and the rest could be in the basement if it's a finished basement. However, as we have it defined here, you'd have to have a minimum nine hundred and sixty on the first floor, and then the rest of that. Portion, which is what, four hundred and forty square feet, would have to be on the second floor. So that's why if we define changed living area to include finished portions of the basement. It would change the sizing of the homes and allow smaller homes than we currently allow. So it's just a consideration.
Except that it it specifically spells out that it has to be on the first floor.
Nine hundred and sixty has to be on the first floor, but the rest of it's not specified. So I'm reading C. So C, you could set, if we allowed finished basements behind as part of living area, you could have nine hundred and sixty on the first floor. Four hundred and forty of finished on the basement, and it would meet C. Because C doesn't require that other four hundred and forty.
Is that a smaller home?
We would allow smaller homes.
Is that a smaller home?
Is what a smaller?
Is that still a smaller home? Because now, the difference, the difference is in C, right now, you could build a home that's nine hundred square feet. On the first area, on the first floor. And the remaining space either has to be on a second floor.
Correct.
Or if we finish off the basement, it can be subterranean.
Under our current definition?
No, not under, if we were to put in.
If we were to put that in, that's correct, so you could build a a house that had nine hundred and sixty on the first floor. Four hundred and forty of finished in the second floor on the basement, and it would meet the code.
Yes.
Under the code as it's currently written, you have to have nine hundred and six down the first floor, the other four hundred and forty can be on the second floor. But it cannot be on the basement, because the basement's not counted as part of the living area requirements. So that amendment to the text, if we included finished basement space within the living area, would allow smaller homes. Than our current text allows. Because our current text does not allow a nine hundred and sixty square foot first floor with no second floor.
So what you're saying is the appearance would be a smaller home from the outside. Because right now, you could build a nine hundred square foot home with no basement and put the additional square footage above it.
Correct.
What's the difference between building a nine hundred square foot home and having a basement that is finished?
Yes.
It's from the exterior looking at it as opposed to the actual interior. So it's not necessarily a smaller home, it just appears smaller.
Assuming that you have a crossface basement, which, I don't know.
Or or no basement.
Nor, or a flat.
Yeah.
Or a slab.
Yeah. Okay.
What that.
What what are the secondary, third, third order effects of it? I get it.
I think that that's the only place that this will come into play.
Yeah, okay.
Inspector, well, your calculations are different, so let's not go there, because I think it muddies everything. The next change we're gonna get is an identical change to the R two district, which is just the way that we reworked this section. Nothing different between the R one and the R two. This has to do with in businesses, instead of doing living areas, we're working on floor areas. So we've defined the area for purposes of calculating outdoor displays as terms of. we've defined the area for purposes of calculating outdoor displays as terms of the gross floor area on the ground floor, which I think is very consistent with what it was before the ground floor area. We're just using our definitions more precisely. Same thing with landscape material. We had floor area, we just cleared it up to be gross floor. Senior residential facilities, same thing, gross floor. Non-conforming gross floor. Restoration of damaged buildings, we'll come back to that again, but we did clean that up to say gross floor instead of floor. Non, again, non-performing, this is parking areas, gross floor where we have floor area. This is where we get into the public floor area is with respect to parking spaces. Those are calculated based upon what we called it before is net floor area that is accessible to the public will be used. So under our new definitions, it's called public floor area. It meant the same thing. So there's really no change. It's just a clarification. And then we'll get through all of that. We just changed all these to be public floor area to make it clear. Here, floor was used, so we made it gross floor area, which I think was the correct definition. Here we had gross public floor area. Again, it was just an inconsistency. So we just removed the word gross. Adult material. And that's it. So I guess the only question here is back to our definition and consideration of Mr. Marzullo's point of do we want to change the living area to allow for amend this definition to say this does not include unfinished portions of a basement as opposed to does not include basements.
Is, I'm, I'm not familiar enough with it. Is this living area or living space referenced anywhere in the code where it's not talking about the smallest possible home you can build?
I don't think so.
Because if that's the only place that it's being utilized, then whatever. Can't imagine Tom seeing a whole lot of permits for the smallest home you can possibly.
I was gonna ask him, permit for 1,300 square feet or less and it's years here.
I think that that's the only place. So it's in the R one. This is where we spoke about it.
Yeah.
The minimum dwelling size, all dwellings.
Yeah.
Have a minimum floor, first floor living of about less than 1,500. That must be, oh, that, this is for conservation development. That's why I was trying to figure out where the conflict was. The R two district, same thing. But they're, they're all minimums. Correct. Now where is this? Hang on. So if you remember in the business district, we allowed dwelling units above the first floor. So this is that. That says the minimum square, square feet of living area for dwelling is up to.
But wouldn't, wouldn't.
But it wouldn't apply because this has to be the second floor or higher. So that's the only place that we allow within business. And that's, that's it. So it would just be allowing for smaller homes to be built if we amended that to say it includes unfinished portions of the basement.
I don't.
You're the one who raised it.
Withdraw my, my concern. I'm, I'm done. It's fine. Leave it as is.
Good. Perfect. Think the last, we'll maybe just do one more tonight. Adult family homes and institutions of human care. And the, the primary reason for looking at this is because really institutions of human care were undefined. So when you look at other definitions of institutions of human care, it was pretty vast. So, and then also we had this distinction between adult family homes or family homes for persons with disabilities, which were accessory use and institutions of human care, which were conditional use within our residential districts. As you can see right there, institutions of human care. So the solution for this currently, and we did have some debate about this and we flagged as something that we come back, come back to is we removed as an accessory use, adult family homes and family homes with person, for persons with disabilities primarily because of Fair Housing Act concerns and whether that could we could have that limitation in there anyway. The other thing that we did is we removed as a conditional use institutions of human care. Because again, part of the concern was that's undefined. And when you looked at it, could that be a doctor's office that's allowed within a residential within a residential district without allow for nursing homes within the residential district? What sorts of things would be considered institutions of human care? So we just felt that that was inappropriate for our residential district, particularly since we already have senior housing is, is permitted within our business district and that might be a more appropriate place for those sorts of things. And we also have doctors offices is permitted within our business districts. So we just removed it. That was, that's where we gotten on that. Any future thoughts? I think the biggest point of contention was the question of, do we leave the accessory use of adult family homes and family homes with persons, for persons with disability and recognize that that might be challenged at some point, but we'd rather leave it and let it be challenged? Or do we remove it because it really creates an unfair situation for people with disabilities and on its face, it might not be enforceable anyway. So as a government, we really shouldn't be creating laws that are potentially unenforceable. Okay with it?
Yeah. Okay with what? Removing it?
With removing it.
Yes, with removing it. I'm good.
Yes. When I say, okay, I mean, are we okay with the amendments as we're opposing them?
Yeah.
Without making further, without making further clarification.
Fine with removing it.
Good. Why don't we do one more? It's an easy one. Conservation developments, it's all in one tight area. Well, I should say, there's not very many amendments today. But they're, they're good amendments. So the first one is the minimum setback from a proposed public right of way. It's currently 30 feet and we had some safety concerns regarding that and just the proximity of the homes to the street. The ability for people, as you're driving down the road to see any small children that may be running in the front yard. So we just suggested pushing them back a little bit. I think that that was very consistent with actually one of the suggestions that came out of the comprehensive plan review or audit, I should say. And one of the things that the the, our consultant at the time and suggested, we might want to look at is, is, is look at how close things are to the road. The, we do have some conservation developments that are already set back 30, 50 feet. Other ones are set back 30 feet. I think it makes a very big difference, although it doesn't seem like a large number. I think visually it does create a very different aesthetic for the community. I do think that it offers some safety precautions by moving it back. So that was one of our discuss areas, topics. The other one was the conservation developments currently have no rear yard setback. Most of the conservation developments that you see, the rear yards are, are budding conservation property. And, but that's not always the case. And in every other district, we have some sort of setback. So we thought a setback was appropriate here, one to, to try to discourage encroachment onto conservation land. So if you are able to build your shed directly on your line, you're very likely cutting beyond your property and conservation land to maintain an area around the shed, obviously. So this minimum setback would achieve some break there additionally for those lots that do have a, another property of budding them. We want to have some distance between any sheds for potential fire hazards that to mitigate fire spread from one property to the other, which is one of the most common reasons that we would have a setback at all is to, is to control that fire, fire spread and to allow for emergency responders to get around a, a building in the event that there's an emergency at the building. So we had some discussion there. We ultimately settled on a 10-foot setback, which is consistent with what we see as the side yard setback. And I think that that's a pretty reasonable standard. The final thing that we we amended is the requirement that development should, shall be served with public central water. All of them currently are. And so we just wanted to make sure that we noted that any future conservation developments do have to be served by public water as opposed to well water. Any concerns with those amendments? Are we okay with moving forward with those amendments as written? Good. I suggest it's a long evening. We're already eight twenty-two and I think our before discussion will be quite lengthy. So I would suggest that that one we hold off until our next, next meeting and that at that point we would review the, the final two items, which are E and F before a possible vote to move forward with this. How does everyone feel about that? I'll maintain a motion. No, sorry. We'll not entertain a motion. We're not even close to the area. Chairman's report, we have a concept plan that's been submitted for the hollow at Willow Lakes. There was an initial plan and actually went all the way through preliminary site plan in around in 2018. They have made some modifications to that plan. So the new plan is, is for you. Again, this is just a concept plan going through Medina Planning Services. They've not submitted any formal documentation to the township to start the preliminary or final site plan review. We did start to collect comments from the agencies. I'll, I'll just read those as noted here. The super and the road superintendent indicated that the road width need to be updated to match the updated subdivision standards. Per the plans, the road width is only 20 feet wide with 10-foot lanes. The updated subdivision standards state it must be 22 feet with 11-foot lanes. So they'll just have to widen the road a little bit. This developer is pretty aware of that. This developer, I think, is the developer that's building Rock Ridge, which just went through the final site plan. So we're, we're pretty familiar with these people. The fire department said in, in regards to this development, we need to ensure the cul-de-sac matches our tankers, turning radiuses and swing clearances. I have a test document with our tankers measurements. Our primary conserve would be an island in the middle of the cul-de-sac restricting our apparatus maneuverability. He then provided the, the information on those turning radiuses. I will note that as proposed, it does appear that they have a cul-de-sac, an island in their cul-de-sac. Inspector Wilson noted that this falls within R one district. The site information on the concept plan shows 21 lots with a minimum of two acres, minimum frontage of 175 width and 70 width on the cul-de-sac at the roadway, right of way, minimum building line of 175, 75 width. 90 setback off-road right of way and side and rear requirements meet the Hinckley zoning code for an R one district. Our appearing setbacks must be adhered to in accordance with chapter 17 to include wetlands. A final, a preliminary and final site plan is required by Hinckley zoning in, in accordance with chapter 11, a landscape plan for the front entrance and cul-de-sac should be included as well as location and rendering of proposed front development sign interest, entrance, light post and mail kiosk. Any common area shall be maintained by the HOA, including the landscape maintenance of the cul-de-sac and the front entrance island. A copy of the deed restriction and cover, covenants should notate as such. The site information also shows proposed private street. I don't think that this is going to be a private street. They did note on their proposal. It, it, it notes proposed linear feet of private street. 2,485 linear feet. I, again, I suspect that that's a typo because I don't imagine they're doing a public or private, but we'll find out. The subdivision standards still apply regardless of whether it's a public street or a private street. Confirm that the deed restrictions, government covenants reflect that the HOA shall be responsible for maintenance, control, insurance of common areas, including any private roads and common drives. They, we should confirm that the water lines is sanitary sewer or onsite wells and storm management, the pond being created expands to lots, lots 11 and 12, excuse me, 12 and 13. The code does not allow creating a pond in this situation. But we have to look into it further due to the store management concerns that they have. So, and then the other thing was the subdivision comment guidelines. I don't think that there's, that that's pretty standard. So there were no major comments that, that I think will raise significant concerns here. And do you, does anyone have any further comments that they would like to submit it to the Medina Planning Services as part of this concept review? One thing that I'll note for us to consider probably in our next text amendment, and I'll talk about another one actually in a few minutes, but one of the things I think we should consider is we require developers to provide a copy of their HOA development guidelines and restrictions for conservation developments, but we don't necessarily require that for other developments. This will be the second second development in a row that potentially has issues where they have some stormwater management concerns like a pond or drainage areas that are being controlled by the HOA. And they're also having a cul, a cul-de-sac or excuse me, an island in their cul-de-sac. And that is by township standards required to be controlled by and maintained by the HOA. I, I think it might be a good practice for us to consider amending our finals, our site, site plan review to require a copy of HOA documents as all as part of our final site plan review for all subdivisions as opposed to just conservation developments so that we're capturing that document as part of our review process. It's a nice formal way for them to officially submit it as opposed to us not requiring that. And then Inspector Wilson having to try to capture it after the fact, review it and then tell them, well, this language isn't sufficient for ensuring the control of the island, for instance, and then having to work through that. So I, I do suggest that we consider that text amendment to, to require HOA documents for all subdivisions as opposed to just conservation development. Nothing else. Beautiful. The next regular zoning commission meeting will be December 7th, 2023. Inspector Wilson, I know that we had a top conversation today on the topic. Did you want to have give, give everyone an intro to this? Because I do think it's a topic, another topic that we should start considering as part of our next text amendment.
Well, I had a call today from a realtor and he told me he's looking for a million dollar home in waiting for his client. And what they want to do is have a wedding venue and an event center. And can we do that in, in Hinckley? Went on to tell me that he said.
Within the residential district.
Yeah, within residential, thank you. And so in my opinion, you can't do that, but it's, it's becomes a business, you know? When does it become a business? When does it become a business and how?
Wasn't there a lawsuit, agritourism?
Well, there were, that had to do with winery.
The winery.
Right.
Wedding law.
Well, but that's what he said, a wedding thing.
Yeah, they, they were able to get that, yeah. And it ultimately went through as a winery. But I think what, what's interesting here is what they're, what they intend to do is advertise it on Airbnb effectively as a short-term rental. So you're renting it for the weekend as a short-term rental, but you're renting it really primarily as an event center for yourself. You might stay there overnight. They might have a house or a cottage, but really you're renting it as an event center. And, and so the reason that I'm bringing this up is we really might want to look further into short-term rentals again and how we define. You know, we have the definitions now, but we might want to look further into whether those become a conditional use, what sort of conditions make it go through the BZA. Because I do worry that some of these short-term rentals will effectively serve as places for wedding venues or event centers. But because they're renting it out overnight, potentially they're calling it a short-term housing situation. So just something for us to consider. I, I don't think that's your first inquiry on this sort of thing. And I think we have others that are already existing in the community that might be concerned. So it's just something for us to, to consider looking at again, that I think should be a very high priority topic when we look at our next set of text amendments. I have nothing else, this crew.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Marzullo.
Nothing.
Perfect. Mr. Spellman. Trustee. Inspector Wilson.
No, that was.
Perfect. Members of the general public.
I'll be quick. One thing, just kind of procedurally, it, it would be nice if this document was available prior to the meeting. The, we had seen the, like the minutes or the agenda sometime this afternoon and there wasn't a little time to, to go about putting in a record request to try to get a copy of it. But for, you know, the couple of us in the audience to be able to follow along would have been kind of nice because there were a couple of points. It was like, well, I'm kind of waiting for you to scroll back up there so I could finish reading it. And so just kind of a, an idea for the future. The other thing, I just wanted to, to, when you were talking about the annexation and the, the, you know, the local taxes from Brunswick. Kind of interesting that Brunswick on their Department of Taxation site does list that they do not tax dividends, interest, pensions, social security, Medicare, poor relief, unemployment insurance. So it, it would actually be a little less of a disincentive for them, the higher the percentage of their residents that were actually retired. You know, if they had a hundred percent people that were on retirement income, there'd be kind of a no-op going over to Brunswick because.
Doesn't, doesn't include 401K though, right?
Um, well, it depends on how you call it because it says dividends and interest pensions, but yeah, it does not specifically exclude 401K. If I was saying that I'm, you know, it's my interest. But I just, I, I had looked that up because I know a lot of places like Rita doesn't have social security and it looked like they did the same. And that was it. And it's still just a couple of minutes after.
Sorry, we did not get to the topic. I'm sure that you're most interested in, but we will get it to an honor to summer meeting, I promise.
It means you get to see us again next month.
Perfect. If there is nothing else from the audience, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight 34 PM.
So move.
Move by Engelman.
Second.
Second of my crew, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?